All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Did you really start recording?
Yes.
Oh, they're Jacki's, so we had to borrow them to get in here.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, those are Jacki's.
Okay, it's March 13th. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. It's 4:03 PM. I'll do roll call of Planning Commission members first. Howard Trix.
Yeah.
Abby Domon.
Yeah.
Joey Edwards. Lupe Bobedia.
Here.
And Jamie Seifer.
Here.
Great. And then County Commissioners, we did just have Commissioner Mudge and Commissioner Fiedler in here. Commissioner Marcela, did I hear you on there? No, I thought I saw you for a minute, but, um, okay. Well, maybe all of the Commissioners will be joining us again here soon. But here's Commissioner Fiedler. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Other than... We have minutes to approve from January 23rd, February 13th, and February 27th. And all of them kind of had different peaks. So on the January 23rd, it can be Abby, Howard, Lupe, or, and Jamie can vote on that one. So if there, if you all have had a chance to review those, and if anybody has any motions to approve.
I'll go ahead and move. We approved minutes from January 23rd.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then on February 13th, we had myself, Howard, Lupe, and Jamie. Just need a motion to approve. That was just withdrawing the Lipel 7 and doing the tabling for the Poplar Street and Site Plan and CUP.
I move that we approve the 13th minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then finally, February 27th, I was myself, Abby, and Joey. And I don't think Joey's on, so we'll table the 27th meetings minutes to the next meeting. Updates from staff or board?
I think staff has to report that just got back from the ICC conference, which is the International Code Conference Building Codes and Fire Codes. And as soon as I finished that, then went to the Rocky Mountain Land Use Conference in Denver. Spent one day on housing and one day on climate change. And so lots of information. And good information. I've got to, I think, I think probably one of the most exciting things, and I wish Jackie was here to do it, but we did find out today that we've been awarded the Innovation Grant from DOLA to put towards infrastructure for one of the selected sites for the housing work. So that's super exciting and huge shout out to Jackie Wheelahan and all of the community members that have worked on housing. So that's a, and she also was asked by DOLA to do a presentation at the conference. She was the, we're the only jurisdiction chosen. And they really, I would have to say that my takeaway from the conference is that we were kind of used as a model of communities that are really excelling at what the goals that DOLA was looking for, for the grant. So she did an amazing job and really represented our community at the conference well. So just shout out to Jackie.
That's awesome. And can you share how much we were awarded?
I believe it's 1.3. Is that the numbers in the match?
I thought, I thought it was just under 1.3, but we were awarded what we requested.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
Full request, but it's in that ballpark. So super exciting. Great. And I think the other thing is that I, we do have early knowledge that one of the applications for the 27th, still gonna be a good full evening. You've got a lot on your plates. But the, there was an Outfitter and Guide CUP application that the applicant just found out from CDOT that they're gonna have to do a traffic study. This was a very new discovery, and so they are gonna ask to table until they find out the outcome of that. And that's ice climbing, ice climbing at Chalk Falls. And actually Bryce is, he can, did I get all that right, Bryce? Bryce is working on that application.
Yep. So Chalk Falls ice climbing, same access point as the proposed Climax Revival Group Camp. And do at that access point, yeah, CDOT wants to see a traffic study. And they also, also kind of want to know what the outcome of that group camp is gonna be before they really know what to do. Or what direction.
Are the other two applications still tracking? They're still tracking. We just received back Cityana Hill's engineering response, which is with engineering right now. And so hopefully we'll get that back this week. And then we'll be able to be prepared for Cityana Hill, both Site Plan and Multifamily. They have a CUP and Site Plan. And then Climax Revival, their traffic study is complete and in with CDOT. We don't have the conclusion back from CDOT yet, that traffic study, but we're hoping to have that in the next little bit. So I do think that both those applications will be queued up and ready for you at your next regular meeting on the 27th. Those would be our updates so far. I just wanna brag about our team, Community Planning and Development. They get voted best public department. And so not because of me, but because of my amazing team. And so just shout out to everybody in my department that really works really hard. So, awesome.
Well deserved. Okay, great. Well, we'll move into the new business. And I know there are a few process discussions. I know we started some of the last meeting, so.
Yeah.
I think.
I think that's in my conversation. And I'm kind of just hoping this is kind of organic and everybody just kind of jumps in and gives us their thoughts as we go through that. I think one of the first things that has been out there, so before we kind of talk about process, I just wanted to do kind of an update on 1041 regulations, something that has been being talked about. So 1041 regulations are a whole set of regulations that the county adopted. The history that, to my understanding, is when we believe the Box Creek was, there was a reservoir coming in. And there are a set of regulations, we adopted a model code that looks at big industrial projects, big utility projects, extension of sewage and, and water, or selection of a new community. And site selection of a new community. So things like subdivision could fall into those parameters. And so really wanting to look at, is it a regulation that we should be layering on to our zoning reviews when we're looking at site selection? And so right now, we are, we have asked for some help in, Stephanie is helping us review the land use regulation for subdivision, land unit development, and 1041. With basically just kind of a breakdown of what, are there any gaps between what the different regulations look, look at? As well as kind of creating a checklist for staff so that when we get early conversations with applicants, we can determine if a 1041 might be appropriate. And the way that that works, as outlined within the regulations, is if staff identifies that there is potential for 1041 review, then we host a work session with the Board of County Commissioners to determine if the designation would be appropriate or not. And if we go through the process. So there could be something referred to as a FONZI, which means a finding of no significant impact. Or we find out that a designation hearing would be appropriate. So these are, these are regulations that the county has had in place for quite some time, but have never really administered. And so really wanting to see if it is a way to leverage better outcomes of creating new communities into the county. And if there are benefits within the regulations that would better serve the community. And so right now, what we're doing is just the preemptive work of being able to, to get before the board, here's kind of a comparison of what the regulations will do. And proposing an outline of how we will review development when it comes in and how we will communicate with the board in a meaningful way so that we can determine if we should, if they would like to and if we should have a work session on a designation hearing to determine if those regulations should be, or could be a powerful tool in helping us look at, at redevelopment. So that's one thing that we're currently working on. Another thing that, because I was gone, we talked about this last week, and then being gone a week have kind of set me back just a little bit. But I'm going to create a good blessing of tonight. I'd like to just kind of hear from everyone and determine if this is a good tool and something that you would like staff to move forward with. And that's creating a living document that sits on a shared drive with everyone. And we, it's, it's a welcoming letter to the community. And it highlights priorities about work that's being done in the community and things that we want development to know when they entertain investing into our community. So things like, we are in the middle of transportation planning, and that's what it looks like. And here are the locations that we are contemplating. Wildlife protection planning has been an active project within our community. And here's our wildfire protection plan. And here is our boundary, potentially, you know, maybe here's our woo-wee. And, and some different things like that. Or this is, you know, maybe some things about our culture, some things about housing, some things about... So we just wanted to, we're suggesting preparing something that communicates out to all applicants when they walk in CPD's door that we can give to them to help identify to them what our priorities are, what our projects are, and who we are. And what we're, you know, what, what our goals are. So hoping that that might be a good tool to be able to make sure that those really important things are communicated, aspects of, of our identity and, and what our goals are, are communicated equally to all applicants as they come in. And then it's very flexible. It could be edited by the Board or the Planning Commission as all contributors to that information. So hopefully, hoping that that would be a good tool. We're getting very sophisticated applicants. I would just mention that the development that is being interested in our community, you know, they are, they're, there's a wealth of knowledge behind them and, and expectations. And I think setting up our expectations and who we are at the, at the front end might set us up for better outcomes. So wanted to propose that, make sure that that sounds like a good tool moving forward. And then just happy to kind of sit back and, and listen. We left off with considering that there are some, the early discussions of potentially some facilitation with public engagement, which is really great, and really great to find a way to enhance public engagement and in the development process and review process. And I think that, I haven't had an opportunity yet. We had alternating conferences. But I think Kristy Galarza is reaching out as a housing coalition representative to, or facilitator to look to try to engage with community members about how to have conversations around being engaged in, in our review process. And, and so really wanting to sit down and chat and excited to have that very active representation out in the community. And see kind of what we can help facilitate with from staff's point of view as well. You know, offering to explain what the subdivision process or any of our processes look, how we mitigate impacts, how the process works. And just anything that we can do from an educational standpoint too, to help engage with the public as new opportunities are brought forward through the review process. But through that, I think that there, we, we started discussing about when these group, when these groups meet. You know, what's, what's the prop, or what would be the best approach in participation with decision makers and advisory boards in actively maybe engaging in those discussions? And so I think that was one of the items that we left off on. And then also again, about how do we, how do we make sure that applicants are as informed about our community priorities as possible as they enter into the application process? And I think I've done enough talking. I'd love to open it up to ideas, thoughts, and concerns or direction for staff on those items.
So I love the idea of the info, info book. You know, I think that's fantastic idea. I think it can also point to different resources for them to learn more about some of those things, you know, priorities, things like that. But understanding that we're in the midst of, you know, deciding different, different things, whether it's wildfire, whether it's transportation, whether it's short-term rentals. Like, all of those things matter to some of these savvy developers. And to understand that we're in the midst of these changes and, you know, possible overhauls, I think is really important because it could, it could come in to affect them during their application process, but it could also affect them after. And so I think it's just important to have that communication out there. So I think that's a fantastic idea.
And have you all seen like the 1041 process as like just another opportunity for the, for the BOCC to be involved earlier in the planning? Like, if you guys ID that a 1041 is necessary, that's after the applicant has met with the BOCC? So the BO, it's not before they meet with the BOCC, but to determine, so we would have a determination here. First, we do a work session to determine if there's enough evidence that the process is appropriate. So it's kind of, you know, and it's, the administrator goes to the Board and the Board makes the final decision if the 1041s would be a process that we would go through. And then there is a designation hearing. And through that, there's a wholesome middle requirement, there's approval criteria. It's kind of like going through a whole nother section of PUD. You know, with a lot of the same kind of, not all, you know, there, there are some differences. When, it's been a while since I did the review. I know I did a staff report to the Board a couple of years ago. But there, it would just be making sure that if there was a way to fill in the gaps that there, that they're included. So.
I, I heard in your question, I would love, so part of, part of what I've been like trying to get us to look at the 1041 and the PUD processes, because there's just even like nuance of specific language in the 1041 and even that I'm not sure is in the PUD process. But I think that they are very similar, as Anne has mentioned. But I do think that at least, and I haven't been through the PUD, I don't think exhaustively, to find the language. But I know in the 1041 language, there is that site selection process, which in my mind does give staff and the Board some preliminary conversations around the appropriateness of the application before you even get like a full PUD application that staff has to go through or that has to meet like all of the approval or, or application criteria, submission criteria. So that's kind of where I'm, I think about it in that it is a good preliminary step and conversation to have for and with the, I mean, not literally with the community, but with the Board as like highlighting areas that staff probably has also highlighted with an applicant. But we, it's explicit in the code that those preliminary conversations are acceptable. And then at staff gets to make that determination, notify the Board of that determination, and the Board can appeal that. And we can go on to, you know, further conversations. If, if we aren't, we wouldn't be in the moment. But I do, I, I, I just wanna try to make it clear that like going through, I think we are also like very conscious about feeling like we're being cautious not to add a piece to the process. But I think we're starting at such a narrow and limited process that has like, what did we hear? It's expensive to be cheap. It's costly to be like, you know, we, we don't have, we, we try to cut, sorry. We don't try to cut corners in a way that's inappropriate, Anne.
Oh.
But we're trying to like reduce the process, but I think it ends up costing us something through the process. And whether that's confidence and understanding of the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, or like these timing issues and frustration with applicants. I think it's, it's costing us something. And so I, I just feel very much so that we should, we should take advantage of, of an additional layer of review on some of these things.
I think in tangent, I think those two make sense together. I, I, just from my work experience, I think 1041s can be very like subjective at times. So I think if you just really kind of dial in as specifically as possible what you're gonna use 1041 for. I'd be happy to talk more about that, just based on where, where I've seen it. I could find more information for you all on that if it's up on, just because of.
Yeah, and Kayla has a couple of issues put up there too.
We do have like the DOLA study, you know, like they went around to all the communities and kind of... So yeah, any information you have, but yeah. I can't find all the information attachment for the 1041s that we have adopted for the need to review and revamp it. That's probably. Yeah. I can send them to her again. I, I mean, it's matters of state interest, right? So it's supposed to be like that level of scrutiny, so.
Can, can, and I, you said like, I mean, a little bit more like, like what, when you say you found it to be subjective, is that because the criteria?
I think, I think just at the application, at the staff level, ended up being not consistent. So I think that's where as clear as, as you guys can get on how you would apply it so that it's easier on staff to apply it consistently, that's, that's where I've seen hangups.
And, and that's because individual counties 1041s are written vaguely? I mean, or, or is it inherent?
They're just a big hammer.
Yeah, yeah. It, I mean, 'cause it's, it, it depends on the development desires of the folks in power at the time. And so that's where it's hard for staff to understand then how to consistently apply it.
Yeah.
I think something like, it's a bad analogy, but I just think of the carrot and the stick. Like, to me, the carrot is an awesome pre-application meeting, a, all of this upfront information on, on intent for affordable housing and, and, you know, preserving natural landscapes, like all of those community values. That's the carrot. Try to get them as onboard as possible with the carrot. And then maybe, and then, and then that's, the 1041 is kind of a stick. It's, it's a big, it can, it can be, I don't know. That's just, yeah.
Well, and to that point though too, it can be used as an incentive, right? Like, or, or if you get, if you, if you supply all of those things, then it's not significant.
The 1041 should be an easy process then, yeah.
And we can move out of that or not even trigger that.
Yeah.
I just think it's worth looking at some of the language that's in the 1041 versus the PUD and like knowing when to put in the develop, or, or what the SIA compared to the Development Agreement means. And like all the things, like marrying some things in the 1041 through the PUD process would be, yeah.
Well, that was a question that I'm, I've read some of the 1041 stuff that I'm still struggling with is like what, sorry.
Hold on.
Like what, but what, what does the 1041 allow us to do that we couldn't do through our subdivision or PUD language? Or try to put in some impact needs? And, and, and so that's not, or, my question might, I literally, I don't know. This is like, if we can write clear criteria, we could, we could put them, whatever process we want.
Yeah. Kayla?
Hey, can, can you hear me, Heather?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I just think that with the, the 1041 process, like there is a lot of pending legislation right now. I did speak to Speaker McCloskey today, and she referenced, you know, a lot of land use legislation that hasn't been written yet, but that we should expect to be coming down the pike. And so I don't know how much effort we wanna put into the 1041s, but I think if we want to utilize that power, we should definitely look at our regs sooner than later. They're very outdated, they're not specific. It references a map of areas of state interest, but there is no map attached. So I think if that's something that we're wanting to move forward on, I think first we have to actually read through the regulations together and determine what, if anything, needs to be changed in them.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah. And that's, that's something I was going to chime in on today as well, is that there's a lot of, lot of conversation going on and with the county attorneys and stuff because of the pending legislation and changes that are anticipated. And without exception, almost everybody is looking at updating their 1041 regs and light some of these changes, as well as some of them like, like county, like, like counties that haven't been addressed in, oh, since 2008.
Yeah.
So, and whether it's, we look at that now or we look at it in response to some of the new legislation. I know that in, in June, when the County Attorney's Association has its conference, this is going to be one of the primary sessions. It's about 1041 regulations and updates in relation to any new legislation that's approved in this session. So I think it's, it's a timely topic to be had right now. But my concern, when I review our 1041 regs, there's some of what Kayla's talked about too, is there's stuff missing. And it's, you know, I'm a fan of general language most of the time 'cause it gives you flexibility. But in this instance, I think that that could hurt us in terms of folks, if they wanna challenge why someone, something's being designated as a 1041 or whatever, that our regulations might not be clean enough right now to support those decisions. So, but I love the question about, you know, what, what does the 1041 give you that the PUD process can?
Yeah. I would love to, so you said there's a girl working on that?
Yeah. So Stephanie is working on, right now, just going through. And I can give her my staff report, 'cause, 'cause we had done this several years ago. And so she was just gonna go through and update it and just make it, you know, give us a very quick. And I will say too, that, you know, the, from at least, you know, I'd spoken to Mike Verdonia, who indicated that he had history and knowledge of them and that, you know, just had gone and grabbed a quick model code, anticipating not having what was needed to look at putting in a reservoir. And the only evidence that the county has ever actually administered our existing regulations is a finding of no significant impact. is um a finding of no significant impact at climax. They were looking to do, you know, um something up there and obviously that's got a lot of oversight uh associated with it instead of the Ponzi issued and that's the only thing and I think that was done shortly after they were adopted in '08. And so largely they have just never been um used and I think that the map missing is just kind of a haste in which um that they were adopted and then that need subsided and they, and, and they just haven't been a tool that the county's ever used since.
Well, and I'll also say, I'm sure I'm not the only one on the planning commission who's like, 1041 what? So I think that having somebody kind of come in and give us a super quick overview of here's what generally 1041 regulations do for a county, here's what yours currently are, this is the differences that you would see between using those versus what you currently have with your subdivision and PUD regulations and are there gaps? And are there gaps we can just fill, are the gaps that can be filled in our, in our current regulation process while we're waiting for legislation and then deciding if we want to then fine tune our 1041? But it seems like if we could at least identify upfront what could be missing or what, what we could do with our regulations in the meantime, which is because it sounds like using 1041 right this minute maybe isn't the best idea, but um if we're able to at least identify them and really identify, is this a path, like does, does the county want to go down this path with the 1041s? In the meantime, do we want to adjust some of our regulations for subdivision and PUD regulations to help offset any, any gaps that are there, what needs to happen? But I think right now, at least for me, we're talking about these like random things and I can't really connect them.
And, and also I got that, I mean, something as I was like trying to get my head around this is in addition to like our PUD and subdivision language, also if there, if there's like a map of like 1041 areas of concern, like well, whatever that area is, draw a circle around, maybe that's an area we want to like revisit what the zoning is there or like what the East Table is for those zoning.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, and it's a, it's a, it's the fourth time this map, this fourth time this map and like in my head, it's like the whole county is the map, like there's not like one area that's not a concern because it's all so different and like the superfund site and the investment of CDPG and the California Gulch and US Forest Service and like, I don't, I mean, in my head, this map is the entire county and there's no like, so like if you want to call out the Arkansas River or the IM or, you know, I don't.
It, it probably depends like how detailed the sort of like control is you're trying to do, because if the area, if the map is the whole county, then it's probably going to be like some fairly general level criteria, whereas if you're getting into individual zone types, you'd be like, no, your driveway has to be like this wide or whatever.
Right, right, right.
You know, or you can't touch rivers in the whatever, you know, you know what I mean? Like, like the more, the more you're getting into individual land type or, or, you know, land use zones, the more specific your criteria.
Kayla?
Yeah, I was just going to echo Jeff's point of like, if that, we believe the whole map to be like the entire county, then it just needs to say that in the regulation because while I respect your interpretation Sarah, I think that developers could very much argue that that isn't explicit in the 1041 regulations and that that could cause a problem for us um if it's not specific and we're not pulling out the natural resource that is of state interest that we're pulling the 1041 permits up um on. I don't, that's not to say that I don't think the 1041s aren't um something we should prioritize if it does give us more um authority and the opportu- opportunity to take a deeper dive on um land use applications before they get to the point of the planning commission. I just want to make sure that we close the exposure to the county of any um liabilities from not having that uh 1041 code up to what we want it to be.
Chris, you know, to try to answer the question in terms of whether the whole county can be designated as applicable to the 1041, the code specifically puts out certain areas that can be designated and they're mineral resource areas, natural hazard areas, areas containing or having a significant impact upon historical, natural, archaeological resources of statewide importance and areas around key facilities in which development may have a material effect upon the key facility of the surrounding community. So I'm not so sure we could just say all of Lake County needs these without being able to specifically say why.
We're so starved.
No, I'm saying, I mean, having been to the CWPP and I'm not interested in arguing that point, but I, I with like some level of confidence could say like almost all, I mean, even considering the wooie of what has been expanded at the wooie from the proximity and the city level to what the wooie is and like the values at risk and all that through the ZWPP, it's like everything but maybe 10 or 20% of the county. So, I mean, I think you applied those definitions and that's just what, and again, I'm not arguing, like, like that's, that's just kind of my argument, those, those definitions really mean.
Probably at least like 80% of the county.
But you could see where some of them, like where some pinch points have happened really recently where if you had a, a process, if we were using 1041s, that, that could have been a good review lens. Yeah, I, so, so it's definitely, I mean, and maybe it is like to Heather's point, see where, see where the inconsistencies are now and then especially with all of the changes coming potentially, then, then that could be a really good conversation for the summertime to, to get, get some code updated.
Because it just, to go back to that, that point though Sarah, is in, in order, it could also provide for designation in matters of state interest that, that the designation shall specify the boundaries of the proposed area and state reasons why a particular area, area is of state interest, the dangers it would result from uncontrolled development in any such area or uncontrolled conduct with such activity, the advantages of development of such area or conduct with such activity in coordinated manner. So I, that's again, why before we go down.
The application, the area of the application?
In terms of designating an area of state interest for the local government to be able to do that, that's the process you have to go through, you have to, that's why I was going back.
When you designate the action, activities of state interest, I don't actually, I mean, I can't, I can't recall.
It's a, it's a particular area or.
Areas, I mean, like if it's a, yeah, oh, I'm, okay.
I, I, I'm just saying, it, it's, it's the area or the activity, so it's not just one, so.
And, and the areas or the activities at least, maybe not the areas, but the activities can be designated upon the receipt of an application. So that can be designated when we haven't, if something comes across that we have a problem with either.
But there's a public hearing process you have to go through.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but you can, you can, I mean, you have the authority, the county has the authority to do that.
If you want to go through the whole process of designating an area of state interest.
But, but, I mean, pretend they're both the same, the process is the same, if nothing else, if they are the same, I think that I just have read a little more specific language in the 1041s and the addition of certain parts of the processes that I think can strengthen our confidence and information to consider applications.
It doesn't sound the same then to me. How are they the same if they are offering different language that allows you a smaller regulation? So I guess that's the piece and then, then needs to be like brought to the table, like what, what is, what are the pros of, and I think that's what I'm saying, like there could be gaps or there could be pros to using this as a process versus this as a process. But I think all of those pros and cons still, like I feel like we're having a really deep dive conversation about something where we don't have those comparisons right now and I guess that's where I feel like most of us are in the dark while we're talking about what part of the map can be, you know what I mean? And then you're, and then you're talking about, well, I think there's still language. And so I think that if there's language that's different, then that should be added to Stephanie's report too, like if you're saying, this is why this would be a better regulation, I think that's a gap to me.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's what we're looking at, right, is what are the, what are the differences between the two processes that can we fix those with the regulations we have so that in the meantime, while we're waiting for legislation to help you with the 1041 stuff? But talking about adopting 1041 stuff when we don't know the differences, that's just.
And I also, I mean, I think, I, I am sure Stephanie will do a great job, but I also would encourage because I still continue to read through both of them and there are, I don't think that anyone is going to pull out all of the, I think I would encourage everyone to find some time to read through um some of them too.
Maybe that's even something like DOLA's teams could help us with is, is to, to do an education session.
So I've already reached out to Casey McRuson from DOLA to, and I talked to her about my juice conference view on several different things to see what they would have time and availability to do on process or non-1041 and so, um, yeah. And then they offered, you know, achieved and Google offered technical assistance in those kind of um scenarios, so yeah, absolutely great resource. And I'm, right now, so that everybody is on the same um page, I am emailing everybody the 1041s because I'm not sure who has them if he doesn't, but I'm just going to send them to everybody and that way they're on the top of your inbox if you do have them or so that way everybody has those. Even if we don't, like I think it's a missed opportunity to, just to go through that process and make that formal determination, whether it's, it should hit the threshold of going through 1041 or not. I think any applicant hears 1041 has a set of expectations that are very high and they should like be prepared to meet all of those expectation, uh all those, answer all those questions. And as we go through that, if, you know, that's a relief for the process, the whole process of their proposal. And I guess I'm speaking more towards specifically like residential development, then that's, that's a bonus, great, we get to go through this and we know you'll answer these questions through the PUD process. It might, it, I, I think there is some value there um rather than just ignoring.
So, sorry, just to clarify, so ha- having that as a checklist, even with the 1041, with the Lake County 1041 in its current state?
Yeah.
Before we.
Yeah.
Any potential improvements?
I mean, I think, I think that I have done, I have some highlights in research like on water projects where there's been recent litigation and, and mediation between parties on nuances of language and I have some examples of where improvements can be made, but I don't have, I mean, I don't know how, what that looks like on um to that level of detail on something other than a water project.
Is there any state, or I don't know, Sarah, Christie, is there any state review of like where a county draws its map and what, I mean, they have the criteria you listed, but like, I mean, if we do something ridiculous on one of those criteria, I don't think we would ever do that.
So the, the, I mean, the, the code that's applicable to this is, I mean, 65.1, it's, it's pretty specific and so my expectation is if someone believes that you're misapplying the 1041 process, it would be for them to file a complaint.
Okay, so there's no review other than if someone?
Complaint, yeah, so it's essentially the state's delegated to, to certain areas. But if someone wants to, and, and part of this boils down to constitutional property rights, you know, in terms of the, the right of folks to be secure in their, their property and such, so and that's usually how it's challenged, if somebody, if the local government designates something as an area of public interest and the landowner disagrees or the reported developer disagrees. Also, you know, keep in mind too that for areas where it is designated as subject to a PUD, the code expressly says that the, the, this article doesn't apply there. So that would be something else to keep in mind that.
I'm sorry, Chris?
That the code says that essentially um it doesn't apply for, it's, it's, the this article shall not apply to any development in an area of state interest or any activity of state interest which meets any one of the following conditions and one of those conditions is um the development or activities in a land which is conditionally and finally approved by the appropriate local government for land unit development or for uses, or for a use substantially insane as planned unit development. So if you've got somebody who's gone down the PUD path, you can.
Or you can layer on.
Layer on the 1041.
Oh, no, yeah, and I don't think 1041s are applicable to if you're trying to do something that's acceptable in an existing zone either.
Yeah, well, it, yes, yes.
And I, and I do think that we should, I mean, should we not be careful, like it's really areas of activity, designated activities.
It's, it's not just activities.
It's not just physical areas.
Well, no.
But the activity.
It's not just the activity, no, it is an area, it's area or activity.
Okay.
That is controlled by the 1041.
It's a policy, policy. It's tough, I just, I've seen it like mainly applied to water projects.
Yeah.
And so.
That's what most of the cases are.
Yeah. If waters county probably wouldn't be able to investigate more. Yeah. And so action for staff is we'll continue to do our internal review and then continue to follow up with DOLA and Casey, because I was, I was, it was brought up uh earlier in the year about um maybe doing an annual, that annual, I know the planning commissioners last year, I think in June, we did the DOLA training um with Casey and she can highlight different things, like she could really narrow in on policy, 1041, um things like that, so I have reached out to her to see if we wanted to do another um training, she could cover um uh conflicts of interest, um she could cover 1041, she could have a process, so um did reach out, she said that they're trying to get through the legislation right now um and that, but she loves doing trainings and that, so we had a quick conversation and that she'd be very interested in doing that again, so it was just a matter of trying to figure out when.
I think that'd be best until we get through this legislative session and find out what we're dealing with.
Right, right, so um but I think, you know, just continuing to have that active conversation internally, we can, um I've sent out the 1041s for everybody to look at um and we'll um really kind of compare them side by side and that's kind of what we're trying to do just internally, so we can have a starting point or.
Yeah, because I think that it puts everybody here on the same page as far as what, what we're even talking about.
And because this has been such a topic of discussion, Pitt County just updated their 1041 regs, so if it'd be helpful, I can send out that sample for folks to look at to see what a more contemporary iteration of 1041 regs.
Yeah, for sure.
And Bent, yeah, Bent County on water specifically too.
They've got the Bent County, I think it might stay.
And I can pull, I can um reshare some of the highlighted um which.
Yeah, I think that DOLA reported and you sent that out, I know, you know, when they did that true and compared to different counties and.
Oh, yeah, there's that too.
That's kind of a good case study.
Yeah. So, and then everyone, um, is good. So as even tonight, I could start sending out kind of our, um, community introduction. Probably, you know, priorities, plans, culture and information. I don't know what's the title it, but, um, you know, something and just share about planning commission and the board. And we could start drafting that immediately if that sounds good to everyone.
Oh, just, just kind of like that.
Information.
Yeah.
This is who we are.
This is what we're dealing with right now. Go ahead, Jamie.
Thanks. Uh, I think it's a great idea to have a letter or something for developers. I just wanted to comment that I would hope that developers would otherwise be able to find that relevant information just looking on our website, which across many departments, we don't have a history of keeping up to date. So I'm just curious if this is going to be a dynamic living document, how frequently we're going to be looking at it, which other community partners and entities would have input into kind of look and feel of this. And, you know, well, I guess my question is maybe why this is important for us to do if they can't find it on our website otherwise. So maybe you could speak to if this is a more specific thing or a more general thing. I think it's a great idea in general, so I'm not like poo-pooing it out of the gate. I just think this feels like a, a heavier lift maybe than is needed if we otherwise had the same information otherwise available publicly already.
I, I think, um, my first thought is it's, um, my experience in pre-application meetings and working with development that just like I have a checklist, um, of information that they need to do for, um, an application. They appreciate the cohesion of that. They appreciate having one resource to, for the source and to highlight, um, certain priorities. I, I think it, I think it's efficiency, I think it's streamlining, and I think it's something that is flexible and changes. Um, certainly they can glean information from other sources, so I'm not going to say it's the only source. And so when you mentioned like taking it out beyond the Board of County Commissioners and Planning Commission, not really looking to do that. This is really from, um, a staff perspective, uh, perspective, um, augmented by the decision-making and advisory. So this is, to me, this is more intentional and specific. Um, and certainly encourage them to, um, gain information from all kinds of resources and to seek those out. Uh, but this is, to me, is, is meant to, um, streamline internal, um, information that we really want universally to be known. Um, but it wouldn't in any way, shape or form substitute for them gaining information from any other platform or any other, any other way. Um, so I would say it's a more, um, intentional efficiency kind of idea because they do come to us particularly about things that will have, um, you know, significant bearing on, just their application as a whole. So it's very targeted to me.
Okay, you just mentioned talking about housing, which I know doesn't have a lot of information on their website and new stuff comes up all the time about housing. So just in the interest of being clear, especially to developers who are building housing, I would want to make sure that this document is, if that's something that's important to the Community Development Planning Department, that that, I don't know, updating of information is just a little more dynamic so that people get the freshest, most important look, especially if they're building housing.
Well, and I, I think that happens, um, you know, I think it's different when, I, I, I think that probably the information that we're going to be putting out directly to the developers will be, um, a very good snapshot in time of exactly where we're at right now. Um, and so, yeah, there'll be certain things that staff will have to make sure are present in there. It doesn't, it doesn't replace the referral process, you know? Applications come in and they're referred out, um, to specifically, they're referred out to housing. And, um, and so they get, and, and, and we also have the community development team, which has all of the refer, local referral agents. And so before a pre-application meeting, they sit down in a Zoom meeting just like this. And we get to roundtable and ask questions of the community development team too. So, um, the referral agents, I, I do mention housing because it is at the top of one of our critical aspects that of course we want development to know about. But there are so many other ways that we engage with the development in regards to housing, um, from our comp plan to our community development team to this document. So it's, it's not going to be the only manner in which they get that information. Um, because there are, because of it, it's critical, um, aspect in any consideration for application. It comes from a variety of different places. So this isn't, this, this is just a, a tool to supplement. It's not replacing or saying that it's, um, you know, there, there will be a lot of things that contribute to it.
I think this is further down the step than what you're talking about. I think things like the comp plan are there for the developer to anybody who's thinking about developing in Lake County to understand who we are on that general scope. Um, but any, any savvy real developer ends up coming in and talking to these guys. And in that moment is when that conversation is relevant and when that, and so having that letter or documentation there that says, hey, these are the extras. This is a little bit deeper dive into what's going on currently, some things that may or may not affect you. Um, and I think that because it is going to be ever-changing, it is something, um, that is probably, in my opinion, best suited as something that just gets handed out by these guys because it can be easily editable at that point. If down the road, the county has lots of time and, and energy to put into a big marketing piece that we can make sure is on all the websites and can get emailed out all the time and all of those things. I don't, not saying that's that idea, but I don't think that's what this piece is tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I see it like, like not at all superseding what's in the comp plan or the code or, you know, on the housing department website or whatever. It's more sort of like if you went and had a cup of coffee with a developer or a landowner, sort of like what you would like actually say in plain English to give them the context. And yeah, in theory, if they read a few issues of the paper and talks to a few people, they.
Could know.
That's that like in my experience, like a lot of times developers need to be remarkably toned up, you know, about some things. And, and it's an attempt to sort of like capture the tone, like that you some, that somehow gets missed in things like the comp plan or like more formal documents. And you can't pick up the code and like gather anything.
Yeah. Well, and this is an idea, right? This is something that's like, hey, we like this idea, maybe it can be helpful and maybe it'll prove to not, or maybe it'll be proved to be like, oh, this is great and we should expand on it this way. But I think it's a great.
Does the housing department sit in on pre-application?
Not on pre-application, but they, we do what's called the community development team. So prior to the pre-app.
Okay.
So there's.
We do, we do with all subdivision, P U D, we do, we bring in the C D T. And on some things like, you know, some, some conditional use permits, like if we had a mining permit come in, we would, you know, something that's got.
See, that's before you're getting the application. You're getting the indication that someone's coming in and then you're following.
Other.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, cause I mean, that's not, I mean, like, yeah, present day, like that's the biggest concern. Uh, at least in my mind, I guess. So it's like, so whatever, whatever we can be as prepared to share upfront with someone to state our intent and, and needs as a community.
When I do venture to say that I think that, um, private public partnerships as far as housing goes, um, you know, or, or something we should be actively pursuing.
Yeah.
So. To, you know, into that end. So we definitely want to, um, be primed and ready for those conversations when the opportunity is before us. And so that's what we are achieving to do. But because we want to, this also gives the board and the planning commission the time and ability, or not the time, the opportunity and ability to have communication with the applicant before the application. And then after, when we want to preserve the process and, and avoid any kind of export type. So it also gives more of a voice, um, in the process for the board and the planning commission, um, who generally you don't see or talk to until your public hearing. And so it also increases your, um, ability to, and elevate your expertise and knowledge about the community and things that you'd like to them to know and, and hope that it would be present within their applications. So it, it's that ability to nudge them into, or, or fully inform them into, you know, what is, what, what, what is important to the community and what, what you would like to see in applications.
Sure. No, I, I think that's great. And now that I'm more fully understand this, I think this is a great tool. When you had first introduced it as a dynamic living document, I was a little bit worried that we might not have the staff time to be updating this very regularly. And it sounds like it's not actually going to get updated all the time. It's going to be kind of a cheat sheet for, uh, the vibe, for lack of a better term, just about kind of where we as a community are coming from. And it's, you know, more, um, user-friendly than reading through a comp plan, but hopefully hits the same amount of bullet points. So I'm all for this. What do you think is your timeline for creating a draft? And also where do you think this might actually live online?
Um, so it, I will, I'm gonna actually, I would hope this week that I have something out, um, to everyone. Am I able to just share it in Word with everyone and, um, like shoot it out right away?
That sounds awesome.
And, and then I would, I would suggest that you're the editors. So when it wants to be changed, um, you'll be able to edit it. And that it's not, it's not meant to, and we'll see how it goes, but it's not meant to be a big burden on staff. It's that it's your document and, um, you get to edit it as, as you would like.
If that's the case.
Changing someone else's statement, but that you could add content.
Yeah, if, if that's the case, could I propose that this is a Google Doc? And that any commissioners are just able to leave a comment with an edit? And maybe we set the concept that maybe Ann, only you and your staff change the actual document, but that we're welcome to leave comments in the side and you can take them or leave them or re-comment just so we're not sending static copies of a document back and forth?
Yep, sounds great. Uh, that's perfect.
Cool. Thanks.
And also I just want to emphasize what, um, folks have been saying, so like Abby, um, Sarah and as well as Heather, just like a DOLA training just for, to get more information and just maybe doing more case studies and lessons learned from other counties of how they've been using their 1041s. Would love to see like how they've been applying it in different counties and what lessons they learned. And so we could see what are some things that are applicable to us and as well as what things, what lessons they learned so that we won't make those same mistakes or, um, and do something that is more tailored to our, our county.
I love that. We pay up. I agree.
The comp plan was forever evolving and dynamic. It seems like it would be like the cover letter.
There you go. That's, that's really good.
Is that fair?
I think that's very fair.
But, but it's not, cause that's impossible. So then this is our like.
But that's a good way to, like, you know, sort of do that for starters.
So I just, I, yeah, cause it's, I think if we're all able to edit it, we all may have different opinions, but we may like, so that could, that, I could see that being sticky down the line, but I don't know. And we'll just see how it goes, but.
But, you know, we may, um, so I think also thinking about the fact that, you know, we're, we're all going to be, um, meeting twice a month generally. And so, um, that seems like just as we send out the agenda, we could send out the newest version and, you know, we could just add it on, you know, when there's, um, updates. We could just all, you know, if there's any need to talk about anything in there, and we could take that opportunity to do it. But, um, I just think that we could just add that in as the agenda in the minutes. You know, there's our, there's our doc and, and then if there's, if anybody wants to propose a, a conversation about something that's in there, then we'd be there. And, and, and yeah, we're gonna have more messages generally. But I think it's that thinking outside the box that might really help us.
Yeah, we're not at those pre-application meetings, so this is our way to be there in some form.
Exactly. And I, I think that would be, you know, really beneficial. Ann, would you, I was also imagining that it might not be the same document. Um, like all the, for, I wonder if it also would be helpful to have that list of the referral agencies that we do have, but then maybe some of the plans and reference materials for those agencies?
You can extend them or something, yeah.
Like, yeah, listed underneath each of those agencies, like the Housing Preparation Plan and C W P P and.
Yeah.
Management, ecosystem management and.
Or service.
Roadless and.
Da-da-da, whatever list of all the things.
Right.
All the things.
That we continue to bring that list, you know, in and.
Yeah.
And work on it.
But it would be, yes, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
I, I think it would be, it would be good for planning commissioners and, you know, the board too to be reminded of those documents that can help in considering the goals and.
Yep, I think so too, a list of resources.
And then maybe that's.
Yeah. Policies or.
Maybe just, uh, what is the word, the live word instead of the Google Doc? Cause that is not always accessible to everybody. Oh, I don't have a Google County email.
Okay.
Just a live link to the word doc.
Yeah, I can do that. Isn't that just someone's share?
Yeah, I think it's the OneDrive, yeah, or OneDrive, yeah.
Do you have to have the word? You guys aren't a Google?
I'll try. Here, I'll send you a human assistant.
Cause I don't, I mean, cause I always just have to open up stuff and that you guys send me in Google.
Yeah.
Cause I don't.
If it's online, I would hope that anyone can access it without downloading something, whether it's in Microsoft world or Google world, I would hope it's just on the web, but.
You shouldn't have to.
You guys are so nineteen nineties.
I know, it's your Microsoft.
Word nonsense.
No, really, it's making you, it's asking you for a Gmail account?
I often get, yeah.
Interesting.
Is it just cause you have?
And then I ended up using my personal, which is not good.
So I just set up C P E at Gmail. You know, I set up a department Gmail account. When I did the platform for our, you know, how I share out the, um, development applications.
Supposed in order to come.
I just made a.
You have to have a department one.
Just, just for that. Just so that I could host. That, um, so I could do that because I was using my original years ago. Account to show docs. But I don't do that anymore. So long, okay, we'll research that. Okay. And, but I will look into it and make sure that we, I put it on somewhere that everybody can.
Comment.
So, um, I will send some, I will further email about what is going to work for everyone. Any other?
Could I just make one quick comment about the engagement topic? Um, could we invite them to come to one of our meetings and have them, uh, I don't know. I don't know if present is the right word, but like, you know, I don't know exactly who all these people are who want to have more engagement, but I'd be down to spend some time on our agenda, having a conversation with them about that.
Okay, are you talking about the other item that you was talking about as far as process? Like, uh, about whether or not we go to like these public meetings?
Yeah, I am talking, I am talking about the other topic. Sorry, was it?
No, 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 that's okay. That's okay. Well, I think that was probably what we're moving into next.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to hear, it sounded like there was a lull in the room if I'm jumping around.
No, 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 I think they, I was just letting them do their typing.
Good, good anticipation of the lull.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so I think the next conversation was circulating around. And I know I personally mounted Chris's opinion, but I just had brought up the. And I know I personally mounted Chris's opinion, but I just had brought up the conversation piece. And I, I think that this one scenario is an example, but I just want to be clear that I, I, I personally think it would be great for us to have some sort of process decided upon for anything, because I think that these apply to, for instance, I'm a developer, I'm going to put this subdivision together. I haven't submitted my application to Anne yet, so I haven't made a formal application. But I know who all the commissioners are and I know who all the planning commissioners are. So I'm going to go talk to each and every one of them, tell them all about my subdivision, and then I'm going to put my application forward. Is that okay? And is it not okay? I don't know. That's a great question. Because to me, that's the same as, okay, well, this public is having this meeting anti-subdivision for a subdivision application that we know is coming, but hasn't officially been put in yet. And then we attend that and then we subsequently vote no on that, on such subdivision. Is there an implied bias whether or not we have the bias or not? And is that challengeable then by that developer? Because I don't think we're dealing with like Joe Schmo developers right now. We're dealing with super savvy people who are. And so that's the perception piece, and I just want to understand how I've approached it in the past is if I've had discussions with the developer about his development, his or her development before they submit application, and I've given any recommendations or had them go into detail about anything, I've pulled myself from, from being a part of the application process, because I feel like that is a perceived conflict of interest. And so we started that conversation last week. I don't know if anybody has anything to add, but I would love to get Legals' take on, on that. I know that technically we're not violating any rules, but I would love to understand what position that puts the county in and if any.
Sure. And so, yeah, while technically, technically it's not ex parte communications and such, if an application isn't actually, but the way it's been interpreted by courts and such is if you have, if you know or have reason of an application will be forthcoming, it boils down to due process aspects. You know, by allowing either commissioners or community groups to meet outside of a public hearing process, are you then risking an infringement on the developer's due process in order to be there and participate in that conversation, if you will? And so, you know, it, it, it's one of those things where, of course, commissioners know, I take a very conservative stance on it. I, I suggest that there shouldn't be any one-on-one communications with developers and such, because it's unlikely that they're going to come and talk to you on a pie in the eye, in a sky type of project that they weren't actually planning to do. That's the main reasoning. Want the audience with you is to start currying some sort of favor or understanding or to somewhat brainstorm with you as to what the concerns might be so that they can modify or determine if they can modify their project in order to give it a better chance of passing and such. So it, again, while it might not be a technical violation, it is, again, it is more perception. How is it going to look? And, and a problem is, you know, if you get a developer who has invested a lot of time and money to come and meet with one of y'all, and then they invest a lot of time and money in putting together pre-application information and submitting it, and then all of a sudden he gets in and it's not approved. Are they then going to claim that there was some sort of a bias? Either because of the conversation they had with you and he said, oh, I don't know if I'd be in favor of that. I mean, one prejudging, and again, this is a quasi judicial process, prejudging their potential project or, or community members going to say the same thing. So it's, yeah, again, technically it may not be a violation to the applications submitted, but my recommendation is try to avoid any one-on-ones. If folks, I mean, if folks want to, if they reach out to you, in a work session with them. If they want to come and talk about potential plans or projects or stuff, to a work session with them. Let them come and talk to you in a public, you know, scenario about what they think of doing. And one thing that comes to my mind when you think about that too is, you know, Steve Smith came to Community Coffee, knowing that that would be a potential conduit to curry some favor, knowing that sometimes commissioners come to those and other people who may be part of the decision-making process to try to, to curry, you know, community support for the project. So for me, it's just another, be real conscious about what communications you're having and understand that when it comes to approving development projects, you are sitting judge essentially, because your decision is the one that's going to determine whether or not the project is.
Can there also be a perception, you know, both ways, right? So not just from the development or, or from, from the developer's side who gets to the hearing process, has knowledge that there's.
Bless you.
Good one.
That there's been participation with maybe the community group that, you know, is not sure of the development, but wants to leverage their support based on making the developer do certain things. And so simply just attended, but the development is aware that you attended and then says at the hearing, I want planning commissioner or commissioner so-and-so to recuse themselves because I feel like I won't, my due process can't be served because I'm aware that they went. And I believe that they, there could be a bias now.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why, I mean, I would absolutely recommend you not attending any meetings that where someone, it is clearly because they're anti the project. Because that, that's definitely, just you attending that meeting, I think, would give the impression that you are likely interested in their position without the developer having the opportunity. Now, if it's an open forum and the developer is there and they have the opportunity to look at what's being said, then that might make a difference. But attending, you know, community meetings about specific planning developments or something, I would recommend you avoid those just because of the risk. And of course, if you go, if, you know, if it's about a specific project, in one point if you go, there's also the risk that someone's going to allege that it should have been publicly noticed that you were going to that meeting so that everybody wouldn't have a chance to attend or any input you would give at the meeting.
Does some train, does that apply to planning commission members too?
Yes, yes. Any commissions, councils, whatever.
I mean. Yeah, right. It's funny. It's a small town for you, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's the unfortunate thing. A lot of our state laws weren't written with your mind of small communities or where you have people who did ten different things.
Yeah.
Jamie, I see you. Just a second. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I think I said this before, but I didn't know.
I wasn't.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I, I told you, like, certainly like, well, I believe that it was an open public meeting and especially if representatives of the developer are there too, that seems like, that's sort of like reading the paper. I mean, like, I wouldn't speak, you know, with an opinion. I wouldn't organize it, you know, I wouldn't try to go out of my way to like comment on my feelings in public, but to, but to simply attend and hear what members of the public are saying seems almost like my job.
What would be the purpose of you wanting to hear that outside of the public hearing?
Because shouldn't they?
You don't even know that they're applying at that point. There's no application on the table. So I, I mean, I agree with Jeff in his, if he wants to do that, I think he could do that. And I, I know that we've seen this go wrong recently in the community, but I also think that just by the fact that we're having a thoughtful conversation, we can all hold each other accountable for not doing this. And I think we also, I mean, this board especially and staff, like, we all, we bring up public comment. We bring up, you know, all of the questions and.
So, so, so just to answer the actual question, I mean, to me, I like, yes, I like respect the public hearing process, but not everyone actually comes to that or takes the time to submit comments. So, I mean, I, I do think part of my job is like listening to people other than the people who might show up and they comment in public.
So what is, what about in that to avoid the risk of some inference of bias? I hope one could, Anne and her staff on the spot could say, that's what your staff is for. Have them attend those meetings and come back and move forward.
That, and urging them to create, like, some representative, even if they don't attend that meeting, urging whoever is there to some creative way of capturing the information that's presented at that meeting, what it's, what, how it ends up in, in bringing that to the public hearing. Because I think that that's what's tough is you have a public hearing in order to have public input and the people that do show up maybe weren't at that meeting. And now you're operating on a level that they're not operating on. And is that due process? Because that is in power trend.
I, I think there's a bit of an idealized vision of like decision-makers and judicial processes in, in, in like some black box where I have like no external, you know, input on my decision-making. I mean, that's just not how human beings are. And decision-makers are human beings. So, I mean, I, I don't know, I just don't see it quite as black and white as, like, we have to somehow not learn anything about the community.
Yeah, but I don't think that's what, at least that's not what I'm saying. But I'm saying like if there's an intentional group having a meeting about a development that we know the application's coming in for, that's.
So, so, so I wouldn't.
So different than reading the paper to me.
So I have not engaged in private emails that I've been invited to join about any development that I will not name, you know, because of that. So I would not go to a private meeting or engage in a group private discussion, but a public meeting where the developer is present, to me, feels like not that much different than, I mean, like I said before, like sort of reading the newspaper and just existing in a community.
I'm sorry, Jamie, you've had your hand up early on.
But I just, one point on that, the only distinction I make is it's not just a question of them being present, like if it's a public, that they'd have the opportunity to participate in that meeting too. And that, and in all honesty, the judicial aspect is, from experience, yes, you are supposed to just look at what's presented to you in a public forum for that. The other thing too is it's, you know, I think of it from the perspective of, we have run into this in the past of where you get word through staff and otherwise that there's a lot of momentum building on a certain issue. Perfect example is the O H V staff. We all did town halls. If you hear there's a lot of momentum building because of these, you know, meetings popping up here and there, you could offer a town hall and invite everybody to come after hours. Because I agree, the time period's on me during the day, there are a lot of people in the community that in, and so they want to be able to have an outlet, and so they will have their meetings at freight after work and bring the taco trucker.
And it's organized by a certain group, right? Whereas if you're organizing the town hall and you can say, this is not any specific development, but this is on this idea.
Right.
Everybody has the opportunity, then it becomes more of a public meeting and it is not a rally one way or the other. Jamie, sorry, thank you.
No, I'm sorry, I can't.
No, you're fine.
It's all good. That's the cost to me not being there in person. So this sounds like a super gray area, obviously, and I, I'm curious kind of two sides of this. One is, if it is so gray, shouldn't we just do what the law says and make it more black and white? Which sounds like if the thing isn't on file, then we're not in violation of it. And the second question I have is if it seems very clear that it would be forbidden to meet with an actual developer actually making a plan, and it seems much less clear about who these concerned citizens are. How organized is this a topic that gets brought up at a dinner party? Is this some event that gets formalized at freight by a quote-unquote opposition group? Doesn't matter if the group is a registered entity, et cetera. And in the absence of being able to put a black and white marker on that gray kind of other side, can I just meet with the developer also and be upfront that I'm meeting with both sides? And couldn't that be a way to make this cool? Especially if there's nothing on the table. And I'm asking out of ignorance here, I don't have like plans. I'm just kind of trying to figure out since this is super gray, how we can make it black and white? And maybe I just go to everything. And is that fair?
Yeah, I, no, I, I think you're, I think you're making yourself way more vulnerable and way more apt to not be able to vote on the file. I think that, but I'll leave it to Chris. I think, I think you're playing all sides against the middle. Like you, you know, I think this role, you are going to hear a quasi judicial public hearing where you are going to make a recommendation to the board. The board is going to make, they're going to be, you know, quasi judge. And so first of all, everyone, all of you are supposed to have the same information. You know, Heather's not supposed to have more information than Sarah does about a particular, you're supposed to all hear the same. So when, when the hearing happens, there's the evidence and there's the testimony. And you're all supposed to hear the same evidence and same testimony. It's a quasi judicial process. I think that, and, and I do, and I'm not legal, but, but just from all the training and everything I've had ingrained in me from DOLA and everyone is, I would just caution you again about, there's not an application when we're very, very aware that it's coming. It's been here, you know, I am, if, if we have, we have knowledge that the application is imminent, I would be very cautious. I, I think kind of, I think that's, that's kind of a slippery slope, but that's just.
And, and my suggestion would be that's why you have staff. Is that if, if, Jamie, if you're being invited by both sides to meet with them or whatever, my suggestion, refer both sides to staff to collect the information that they want the commissioners, whether it be planning or the OCC, to have, like that present, that is part of the staff.
That just makes me feel as a commissioner very restricted in what I am able to do since by my understanding, and, and I appreciate the conservation and the optics of this. And it is a small town. And I feel like if the letter of the law is that it doesn't matter until there is an application, there are many different forms of potential applications. And am I expected by this body to leave every room all the time? Anything is possibly being discussed? Because that also feels restrictive just on me as a person, you know?
So I think that what we're saying is, well, what, what I, what I hear Chris saying is that ex parte communication may not be considered until the application is in place. But that there's still case study that shows that an applicant can challenge a decision based on lack of due process. So we are still dealing with the letter of the law when we're talking about due process. I don't think that anybody here is saying we shouldn't read the paper, we shouldn't go to every single meeting or anything like that. But what's similar to Anne, like, we've just had so many trainings for so long ingraining us on experte communication or perception of such and what can be challenged. And so for me, if I know that I'm walking into a meeting that is, is going to be talking about an application or a specific development, and I know that it's going to be a rally one way or the other, or actually any information at that meeting that's not part of the public process, I would stay away from it. If somebody brings up, well, I hear they're maybe are going to develop something on the east side at my dinner party with my friends, I would probably still stay. But I tell you what, if that application came through and there was any lengthy conversation that I gleaned information on, when it's my turn to say if I've had ex parte communication, even though technically it's not ex parte communication, I still would say, I did hear about this or I did have conversations with the developer before the application was submitted. I do not believe I have any extra knowledge that anybody else has here, and I don't believe that it's influencing my decision, you know? And I'm just making that disclosure upfront so that it's not something that later is, is brought forward. So that's the position that I'm coming from. I don't know, I, 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 I fall more on the concert, which usually I don't, fall on the more conservative side of this conversation because I think that we are going to see a lot of crazy development applications coming forward. And I do anticipate we're going to have a lot of very conflicting ideas and thoughts on them. And I can see us wanting to decline or oppose any of those such applications if they start getting crazy. And I want to make sure that that folds up and that it's not something that gets dragged on through. And I just don't see the benefit of going or having these conversations outside of public hearing when you can simply refer these people to staff or have staff make sure that they're presenting them at the public.
Sure. And I'm not saying there aren't any workarounds about this. I guess one question I have is if I recuse myself from the vote, can I do whatever I want? I get that that diminishes my role as a planning commissioner, but.
Yeah, then why would you want to be a planning commissioner?
Yeah, then why would you want to be a planning commissioner? Would be the.
Am I able to participate in discussions about these matters and not have a vote? Or if I say I did ex parte, I have to sit quietly throughout the whole discussion and also not get a vote?
Yourself, you generally leave the meeting.
Okay. Well, what a tricky situation we find ourselves in.
I guess, um, I don't, this doesn't solve anything, but I'm just thinking of a few things that we could do, like one, this could give more credence to that kind of upfront letter of saying, what are the planning commission values? So then that's cutting out your coffee date with your, the developer, right? Like that's, um, as, as well intentioned as that, like is 95% of the time, maybe that's, that's the mechanism. And then I think just, um, making sure, I think just having that information that's readily available, you know, when those kinds of situations happen of referring for public comment and, and trying to be more inclusive around these meetings and having work sessions and dedicating more of, of, of this time for folks and, and, you know, switching our times up if we need to. I think, I still think back to the back country, and mind you, I was coming out of COVID, that that back country zoning meeting was a wonderfully attended meeting. Um, it was later in the evening, but, but it's because these files are so contentious, I think the more and more opportunities that we can bring people in to our forums, the better. So that's my two cents on it, I guess.
Well, and I like the town hall idea as far as like if we know there's a specific topic. And I guess I also want to just say that I think this could go both ways, not just that like we vote against a developer, but if we, you know, if there's a, a matter of public that, and I just can't imagine attending a public meeting with anybody who knows that you're either a planning commissioner or county commissioner, that nobody's going to try to talk to you directly about any of these things, you know? So it's like, so, so ha- having, having that perception, then if you vote against their wishes, whoever it is, developer or public, you know, was, what was your, it just, I don't know, it just seems like it causes a lot of questions. Go ahead, Jamie.
I, I wonder in this vein, like, how do we know when is the right time for a town hall? And I wonder if there's not a way to gather unanimous, like, okay, if 10 people click, please have a town hall on this item, then we will, and they don't have to say what side they're on. And like, you know, I, I want to have as many of these as possible, but it's a huge pain in the butt to be hosting all of these public meetings. And so it's a tricky balance between being fair and listening, but also I don't think we know when the people are loud enough. And I, I just, I honestly don't know how to gauge that, but I think that's an important metric and a rubric for us to figure out because yeah, I, I, the more public stuff we can have, definitely the better at the cost of our time. And I just want to know we're doing it for these and not for those.
So also just offer, you know, that I am, you know, actively reaching out to see if, you know, what we've always, um, I think suggested, um, is, is coming to fruition. And that is having our community connectors that help support this process. And so, you know, I would say that it's still early stages to, you know, that, that we're seeing that community connection is around subdivision, at least it has, has, is evolving. And so hopefully, um, you know, we'll have some good opportunities to connect and to find that and that, you know, the voices will have kind of a spokesperson or they will, when it comes to individual opportunities that they will, um, through hopefully working together and, you know, staff is going to try to help bridge that gap, um, get educated on the process and opportunities and engagement. And so, um, I would say that I don't think that it all, uh, you know, like Chris kind of continues to say, you staff and might have found more staff. So pretty exciting, because I know sometimes you could say like, Anne, how many things can you do? And so there's, there's a worry about capacity for staff to be able to do these things, but hopefully we are looking at that and hopefully potentially growing in some numbers so that we can. But being the conduit for you, um, so that we can ensure those voices are within the public process, if they can't meet our time or they can't all be present, they've put spokespeople together that can represent their thoughts, opinions and input. And also, um, you know, making staff accountable to them too, to explain and educate where the code looks to mitigate, um, you know, some of their concerns. Is there concern traffic? Well, let's talk about how the code addresses traffic. Let's talk about what the thresholds are of looking at traffic. You know, what, what is their concern and, and what, you know, so is there an opportunity to educate? And is there for both ways to better understand what the code process is and how to get them more involved in the process? And, um, you know, I think with our hybrid too, it seems like we've had better attendance from the public as well. So I think that might help.
Well, and to answer your question a little bit too, Jamie, I think these guys do hear it first, right? Like if you're opposing an application that you know you're calling Anne at the county first to be like, tell me about this, what's the deal, right? And so we are going to have to rely on staff a bit for determining when a town hall is necessary. Honestly, in the however many years it's been on here, this is the first time I've seen a group put together, the Twin Lakes has kind of done something when they did Angel View, but, um, but this was, this, this one sounds much bigger and much more organized. And this is the first time that I've seen something to where I would warrant us considering a town hall, although I also still question whether or not staff or representative for staff could attend this meeting and, and then warrant whether or not we need to have a more general focused town hall, or if we think they can just put their presentation together and bring it to our public hearing and adequately convey their message. But Sarah.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I was going to say on a town hall in an ideal world, if we had so much more time and bandwidth, like we'd pick things. Um, we'd, we'd have town halls on like development on the periphery of the city, not on an application. And I think you guys have insinuated that, but that might be helpful in like Jamie's question of, well, when do we decide when to have a town hall? When there's an issue with an application? It's not the issue with the application, it is the issue itself. And if we have all this time.
Is the concern, is the concern, you know?
Have a town hall about concern about, yes. Uh, taking away I M zoning or getting straddling and C D P H E regulations to mitigating potentially hazardous areas or riparian area, you know, development in these areas. Like let's, let's talk about that, not the application.
I, I see where you're going with that. If I was the applicant's lawyer, I'd be like, oh, you just happen to have a town hall on like the use of cyanide agent, you know?
Yeah.
But honestly, I guess I'm thinking that's
Good information, if you were the developer, you should show up to that and like try to
Yeah, because you are, we're saying a public meeting, right? And so you're giving the information and the developer can explain why they, whatever they think it's so great to leave, you know, leave cyanide into the ground. And then you can say, well, you don't, like whatever. But I don't think, I think if we're talking about something real, like traffic study or something, right? And we're, we're talking about expanding into the I M district. And that's our town hall. And there just happened to be somebody who's developing into the, into the mining district they can attend, and they have just as much ability to present pros and cons as any other member of the public. And also the benefit I see to the developer and the public in those situations is that the majority of the time, and, and this has been, this in my opinion, has been a problem with us in the past of where we have, um, approved something because it meets our code. And whether it's popular opinion or not, and I'm going to use Taco Bell as an example, because I think there was a good 50% of this community that wanted it and a good 50% that didn't want it. And we approved it because they met the code, they did the, they followed the process. But there was a lot of people who don't know anything about code. They know nothing about the regulations that, that we had to put them through. They know nothing about any of that. So having a town hall where it's not led by somebody who doesn't have that information and you're leading and you're saying, this is the process. If somebody wants to develop an I M, this is what they have to go through according to our code. Our code currently doesn't address X, Y, and Z. It only addresses these things or whatever it is. And that could be a pro or a con for us, but it's out there then to everybody, right? And the discussion is happening with everybody and it's led by us so that it's a far more At least that's my thought on why I think a developer actually would like it if they heard we were doing a town hall on whatever it is that they're doing. Cause it could lay some insight.
Are we all on the same page?
I don't think so. I think I'm really slow.
But I mean, maybe at the end of the day, it's still, and I guess Chris, you were saying, like, it's still just going to be up to the individual, but we should probably at the very least be disclosing things, but.
Yeah.
I, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
I did have a, I just, I mean, to Jamie's initial point, like Jamie, I agree with you and I, that's like, that's the best black and white, cut and dry that I can follow. Like is the application in or isn't it? However, I will say that there are different chronic attempted developers that like might ask for conversations where I'm like, who knows if there's an application coming? Sure, I'll have a conversation with you. Cause I don't, it's not very specific. It's not like they're bringing 30 pages of what, you know? And, but I do, I mean, it does, and I imagine that everyone would feel this, but like I, I don't believe I've ever had a conversation with an application that, or an applicant that was imminent and already had pre-application conversation with staff. Like my go-to is talk to staff, vote myself and telling the applicant like, eh, we're in, we're in, like, you're too close. Yeah, yeah, we're too, we're a little too close. Because then at that point, it isn't. I, I wish it was a more like, well, what do you think the board wants to do? Or whatever. And I don't, I don't want to be in that position of like offering unilateral opinion. Um, and I, and, and, I mean, I, yeah.
And maybe some of the basis is like, are they trying to sell you or unsell you on a specific project instead of just gleaning information and insight from you? Because I think that to me is, is where disclosure then has to happen. Because whether it's that I had this really in-depth front, conversation with my friend who happens to be a neighbor of this impending application, I think it would be completely inappropriate for me to sit there and have a two hour dinner and have this huge conversation of why this is so inappropriate and then come to this meeting and vote on it. I feel like that's incredibly inappropriate because then I just had this, you know, heated conversation with a good friend of mine about why they don't want this neighborhood in their backyard and, and the same thing with going to a meeting with a bunch of people. Like I think if they're trying to sell you or unsell you, maybe it's not appropriate. And maybe it's like, hey, I hear your concerns and I think the very best way for you to get your voice heard is to talk to Anne, she'll totally listen to everything you have to say, and then come to the public hearing because that's where you're going to get the ears and attention of everybody there. And like end of the conversation. Like I guess I just don't, I don't see the benefit of like engaging in these things that then could be used against you down the road. I think you have to assume it. I think you have to assume it.
And, and the unfortunate thing too is that, that while again, technically the way the law is written, it's supposed to be implied, application's pending, the case decisions on it haven't limited to that. Because, you know, in, in most instances, it's like somebody comes and says, hey, I'm thinking about doing this with this person and I'm thinking that is an indication that an application may be forthcoming. So that's, that's the challenge.
I guess just make good decisions, people.
Well, and I think
Don't get things challenged.
Find a little cheat sheet for this too, to, to help all in terms of trying to figure out.
Decision tree.
Ex parte communication.
It's worked perfectly fine for me to be able to be like, hey, guys, sorry, I can't talk to you about this.
And why are they talking to you about it?
Right. And most every time I've said that, I've said, if I sit here and have this conversation with you, then I feel like I need to recuse myself when I go to the public meeting. And I would rather be on the board. And they're like, we want you there too. And they stop the conversation. And so I, I guess I just don't, yeah, I mean, I guess I don't feel like it's been too hard to have that one, but.
So I think something for me that would, I think, take away some of my interest in going to pre-application meetings with people, um, is maybe we could try to talk about like, so after the pre-application meeting or at some point between sort of pre-application and kind of like scheduling hearing or writing the staff report, I mean, or, or, or after maybe the community planning team meeting or whatever, sorry, whatever that is.
No, that's great.
I mean, like, I, I, I don't know if this is too much time, but like scheduling a short conversation with each planning commissioner or B O C C commissioner, and we can decline it if you don't have concerns, but like I would, like, I would like to hear what you are hearing. And cause I feel like, and this is on me too, like I know things are coming and I don't proactively schedule the time with you, or I don't always be present at work until, until I really do it. You know, but sort of, I mean, there'd be a helpful nudge for me to like read what materials there are or have a quick discussion. And then, you know, most of the time there's probably not much to add, but you know, every now and then some stuff like, helpful for me to sort of feel prepared, but also be helpful for you in the next iteration of your pre-application discussions.
And you're talking about having a meeting with staff.
Yes.
Staff having me and everyone.
So like, okay. The, the C V D meeting has happened like in the next two weeks, try to find the 30 minute period to send a meeting invite out, you know, to us, you know?
It'd be great, like I can do that when I send out the link to the Google Drive with all the information. Or if you, you'd actually like to have it before the application, before the application comes in.
I was, I was thinking, um, you can send out one of those new calendar things for all of us to sign up for half an hour on board with you.
Oh, yeah.
But, um, I was also wondering, like part of, but part of the process conversation, I don't know if we have time to have now too, but I, I'm, I was thinking too, like, I feel like again, back to like not wanting to stall the process, but really like to our detriment, it feels like it's too rushed in a lot of cases where like maybe an application is accepted and it's not, is, is it not really complete? Like maybe one of the last, and I would love to encourage staff to not accept an application and set a hearing date too prematurely so that we have that time. Cause I feel like that 90 days out is supposed to give us that time to have those meetings and have, have, have conversations with staff. And if, if you don't have all the information of an application until crunch time, two weeks before an application hearing is scheduled, then we're certainly not all going to have that time. And that's not fair to anyone, including the applicant. And if we're like.
So not scheduling the hearing date until the application.
Yeah, like what, what is the
Well, probably most of the time they are, it's just that you've done staff review and app review.
And it just depends too. So it depends on if the referral agency information comes back and there's new things, there's a traffic that you need to trigger.
Things you haven't thought about or there's I feel like that's the main reason I received.
Also, I will say that, um, there has been, you know, so we have a 10 day completeness review period of time. So, um, so a completeness review can only, with, with everything else that staff manages, it can only really kind of go through and go, okay, um, do we have the traffic? Do we have this? Do we have this? Do we have this? Do we have this? Did they do this? Did they do that? And sometimes until you get into it and you really look into everything.
But oh my God, now you need this.
And then shivers.
Or once you start reading it and you're like, wait a minute.
It's missing this big gap. Or they affirmed to this, but they didn't provide any plan. gap, or they affirmed to this, but they didn't provide any plan to get there. Um, so sometimes the ten, you know, and that grows with capacity too, so hopefully, growing capacity, when you can, when you can have ten days review time, when you're not doing so much of other things, you can dip, you can dive into their completeness review better, um, and so we're working on that too, because you have a limited amount of time, and sometimes you really don't get into the depth of the application until you.
That makes a lot of sense. Can we change that protocol and extend that completion time? And also, what does that say? Like, like, I've deemed your application complete, and I have to schedule your hearing ninety days out, or, I mean, to me, if we're finding that a lot of our requests back to the applicant for supplemental information is coming from referral agencies, those two things should maybe marry each other on determining completeness of an application somehow.
So we have, so the only thing is, is that, I guess, it is the time that applications would linger, because we have a ten-day completeness review, we have a twenty-one-day statutory review period that we have to allow review agencies to have by statute, um, we have, so we have a lot of, there is a lot of.
And you need the twenty-one day, right, but to me, like, that twenty-one days should match your ability to deem the application complete, but you also should have ten days after that to actually read the thing.
Except that you want your referral agency.
And all the referral agency information.
You want your referral agents to see the, see the same version that you have.
And then go back out to their referral agency.
If you're having to redo their application because of stuff you found while the referral agents are reviewing it, then you're gonna have a different application to send to the review, you see what I'm saying? Like, you almost need, like, you still need the, the completed application to send to review agencies first.
And then they can table it if it's still not good.
But, the question is, I guess, do we have allowance in our code to extend the ten day?
And I think twenty-one days is our requirement for review, and I don't know how that helps us very much.
And I think at some point, so, it just, some applications just become a big surprise when you get into them, like, they end up in a landslide area, they, you know, something that we didn't, we didn't foresee, and so, hopefully, we give the applicant the opportunity to say, wow, here's all of the deficiencies, and it's just not ready, so let's table withdraw and go back to the drawing board. So do we have an opportunity through, because, because are, are we not triggering the development agreement before, the, the development agreement happens before the application's heard from the board and the planning commission, right? Is there some, without getting into all of that, maybe we all should look at that in the code, but is that a place where either deeming something and say it's a huge residential, right, that it should be the only thing outside of utilities that would trigger ten forty-one, that's where this additional process might come in to give us time to look at things through and determine whether or not, like, and have these pre-application meetings, that's all the different timeline perhaps, or the development agreement that's supposed to be developed with a P U D? I thought I was reading that, understanding that in the code to be that this is, this is what, these are the conversations that happen before, like, even the hearing happens, or does that, does the, does the development agreement get created throughout to the end?
The subdivision improvement agreement, is that finalized till final plan?
No, it's a diff, like, the development.
Oh, the development agreement, right. So the development agreement, um, you know, typically would be, would be a tool with ten forty-one, and so, we also have a development agreement.
Isn't it through the P U D?
We have an S I, we have a development agreement and an S I A, um, and the development agreement doesn't happen, um, until it is new and reduced until coming in. Oh, not in sketch.
But I don't think we've really exercised that, have we? We haven't.
And we've been using just the subdivision improvement agreement, um, so. And, and that's where code calls for it, is it, you know, to do that, because.
The S I A.
Yeah, yeah.
So is there anything that prevents us, so if there's a statutory requirement for the, sorry, going back to dates, the review of twenty-one days, is there something that says we have to schedule a hearing within so many days of that?
No, typically, we don't have anything that said, we, we just have to respond, yeah, and we have that, you know.
So if we, if you did your completeness review, and while sending it off to review agencies, you're diving deeper into it, and then you, you deem it's complete more on what we're all considering complete, and then you schedule the hearing, would there be a problem with that?
I think that would, I think that would, would alleviate some of the, you know, the misstep in, um, getting to the hearing date and having, you know, big, um.
Well, big changes, but then it also, I think, I think it does a couple of things. I think it could potentially say, okay, applicant, like, I know you're in a hurry, but if you're in a hurry, then you gotta fill these steps in for me, and you gotta get this done, you know, like, okay, and so.
We can hurry to the public meeting, and then you'll be in a world of hurt.
Right, and so, and so maybe we have our own, you have your idea of complete, where this is ready for hearing, now I can put it on the books for scheduling for hearing.
Sure, I mean, absolutely, we could, there's no reason that.
And if that delays some people by a month or two, it just delays people by a month or two, but I think that if it's a complicated enough application that requires such a deep dive and back and forth, then it needs to take more time.
Right, right.
And then that alleviates you from having to put together staff reports and change them all the time, because it's ever-changing situation of, are these people gonna get their traffic study, or.
Right.
Are they gonna face staff?
And the, you know, historically, like, with, um, Angel View, West Woods, um, you know, local town halls, um, even Gateway, um, you know, we, things worked like they did previously, however, you know, like, if you think back to Gateway, it had probably close to twenty conditions, and, you know, um, somebody could look at that as, you know, almost a denial, because when you have that many conditions of approval, um, then maybe things were moving too fast, um, you know, and, and really, the best outcomes is you don't have too many conditions of approval, because things have been better about it. So if you look back kind of in the history, I, you know, just kind of thinking about at least those four being ones that we've seen in the last eight years, um, more, but, um, you, you can, I can think back and see the ones, um, that were ready to go, and the ones that had a lot to figure out, and so you just have, you end up with enormous amount of conditions, which speaks to that not being ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, would have benefited from more staff time to work through it, absolutely.
And applicant time, usually.
Add that as another portion to said letter, right? Like, like, you know, our, our goal here is to get it right, not to, to move it fast, like.
So it would, the only thing is, right now, it would take a code amendment for the ten-day completeness review, because it is in code, but so we have.
Well, you could read the ten-day completeness review, so that you're doing your, you're doing your paper check.
Hearing, I hear what you're saying.
But we're just saying that you have your own completeness time period, that's like, this is ready for hearing.
Right. And I don't know that we have. Do you think we have another date in the code though, that has like a, well, I'll need to review that, because there is something else that specifies an action.
How circuit you have to list it.
So I'll look at that, if I'll make sure that we're not, you know, we're not.
Because if we need a code amendment, I would be for that, if we can go down this road, like, if we, if we keep the ten days so that you're, I guess, the only reason I would say that is because it sounds like the twenty-one day is the statutory thing that we have to keep, and it seems to me that you would want those review agencies to see the initial application. So, you still want them to have that, so you want to pass the ten day before you send it to them, and so if that's twenty-one days, I can't see the lengthening your completeness review, because you have ten days to get that, and then send it to them for.
Yeah.
The twenty-day, one-day mark, but I think, so that date doesn't make sense changing, but the one after that, like, if there's a rule that says you then have to have a hearing with it so many times, or you have to have it posted, or whatever, or there's something like that, then I think that's the date we care about, because I think, I think we don't want to bind ourselves to putting them on the books, going through all the efforts of staff reports for months and months and months, for, I mean, some of these, you've had to do so many variations of things, that it's just silly, and so, if we're like, sorry, you're not on the books until.
Right.
We have all this stuff done, so we have to change the language, I think that would be, and then hopefully, that helps you guys too, alleviate some stuff and say, pressure's on you to fill in our gaps.
Right, no, and that makes perfect sense, absolutely.
That's right, I think we all do. Anybody else have any additional zoomers?
Come see us in person.
We miss you.
Um, I'll move that we adjourn for this evening. Good night, I don't know.
Thank you, Sarah. Do I have a second? Do you all want to just?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Thank you.
Bye.
All right, see you.
So my very first job for Eagle County was process improvement around the development review, and so this is bringing back all sorts of drama.
She's like, oh god, get me out of here, so I'm gonna go, I need to go have a drink. No. Yeah, surely, you've.
No, but these are all the things that, like, then you can have a referral meeting with the developer and really flag the big stuff, and then you can do, you know, and it's like, but all they want to do the entire time is hustle you along as fast as possible, so then it's just like, how many, like, then you have to think too, like, how many times am I gonna make staff interface?
Right.
Because, because they're just so relentless, because then, for them, it's like, the quicker the review, the less scrutiny, the less money I'm spending.
Right.
So all of the motivations are just so hard.
Yeah, you definitely have two different perspectives.
Big, huge gaps.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'm gonna go have a beer.
Me too.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.